All right, with it being right at 7:00, Joan, can we get roll call?
Council members Larson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Erickson and Valenta are absent, and Mayor Roberts.
Here. Right, if you're able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council, we have an amended agenda in front of us with a couple absent council members. We did make a few changes. So is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda. Awards and presentations, nothing this evening. Open forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to come speak. If any city issue, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. All right, looks like we don't have anyone this evening. Our next item, consent agenda, is, can I get a motion on tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, items A through L.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have a consent agenda approved. First item on the regular agenda, resolution establishing chip-in program. Mark and Dave Adams.
So, Mr. Mayor and council, at our work session recently, we were able to kind of review this proposed program where we would aim to prioritize some low-cost and high-impact improvements around town, whether it's a crooked sign, or weeds in the median, or various things of that nature. And again, this will just sort of, the resolution that's in front of you directs staff to do a couple of things to enact that program, namely, some of those things include working with other agencies. So a big part of some of the issues that we see around town that we've been kind of dealing with chronically, if you will, are aesthetic issues with our rights-of-way that aren't our rights-of-way, right? So that state and county right-of-ways through our city, while they are under a different jurisdiction reside in our city, right? And so there's a desire for us to take better care than the state or the county really cares to. And I don't mean that in a slight the state or the county, but that's just not their business, right? They're in the business of moving people, keeping things safe, and keeping people moving. And we as a city, we've got a little bit more than that on our plate. We also are in the business of safe and efficient roads, but we also have an aesthetic that we care about, a business community that we care about, a quality of life that we care about. And so our priorities are a little different. And with this resolution, need be directing staff to make the necessary arrangements with those agencies to be able to have either our crews or our volunteers working within their, those right-of-ways to enhance the aesthetic of those areas. And so this is, you know, the establishing resolution here is really purposely somewhat broad to allow this initiative to kind of morph and be scaled as we see fit, as we go forward here. We're going to kind of move into this process in the next couple of weeks and months and see how things go. And then, of course, we'll have the winter months, which will be a little bit of a, probably a downtick in some of the activity. And then again, next summer, we want to hit the ground running early as well. So again, we're leaving it sort of broad so that we can shape and mold this program into what we want it to be long-term. So I would take any questions, and I know Dave would be happy to answer any questions you might have on the campaign as well.
Great. Counsel, anything?
No, no questions.
We had a pretty lengthy discussion on this at the last, at our workshop, and so I think I really appreciate both your effort and Dave's effort and his staff. And, you know, as Administrator Stotts mentioned, this really is addressing areas that aren't typically our responsibility, but taking ownership on that. I think the council was in full agreement that we needed to do more of that. And with that, I mean, as far as our staff and the great job they're doing, nothing slighting them at all. I think they're doing a great job. And we are asking a little bit more. And if it becomes a situation where we do need some more staffing, especially seasonal, to do that, I think this council will be very open to that, to get this program kicked off and continue and just be taking some care of some of these other areas. So with that, is there anyone interested in making a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 25-06-23-0, or, dash, 1, formalizing the chip-in program aimed at enhancing the city's aesthetic and building community pride.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, July 28, council meeting, chamber golf event. Mark.
Mr. Mayor and council, I understand that at various times in the past, we have rescheduled the meeting which conflicts with the chamber's annual golf event, which is kind of their premier event and is quite a big deal in our city, and want to avoid any conflicts with either members of the council, staff, or residents that are planning to attend one or the other and can't make it because of each one. So just in front of you for consideration, if you'd like to reschedule that date, or, you know, cancel it altogether or something of that nature. So anything that you guys would like to discuss is up for grabs.
Any thoughts on that?
Just checking my schedule here.
Yeah, and I think, you know, in my staff report, I believe we suggested a couple of days just later in the week. Obviously, with the Fourth of July, there's not a lot of opportunity the week after to probably try to get into that week, right? So I think I was proposing either Tuesday or Thursday of that week.
So, but this, this is July 28, not June, right?
July.
July.
I'm sorry, July 28.
Yeah, yeah. So you shouldn't have any conflicts there. I plan on golfing that. I'm a horrible golfer, but I enjoy giving back to the community. It's a fun event and a great way to network. And I think it's nice to have some city representation there. So I know that council member Erickson is planning to golf as well. So I would be, I would appreciate that opportunity to reschedule if the rest of council is open to that. Do we want to land on a date, then?
I'm good on the 28th.
The 29th?
Says the 28th on here.
Oh, 28th is the day of the event, so it would either be the 29th or the 31st.
I'm open on both of those days.
Is that a conflict with any staff or any, anything?
I'm okay to not have anyone, too.
And, you know, we can, I guess, depending on, you know, if there's not much of an agenda, we could consider that. But at this point, I think I'd like to at least set that date, and we can decide that as it gets closer.
I would like to make a motion to move it to July 29.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Oh, July 29, 2025.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have a rescheduled meeting, the last meeting for July. Before we go into our discussion items, Mr. Dufour, would you like to say a few words here?
Sure would.
Okay. We went, we kind of went through the, there was no one going to do an open forum, but I saw you sign up, and we always, good to see you for one, and always like having a former council member address the council.
Thank you. Jim Dufour, 1531 Ninth Avenue Southeast, Forest Lake. Evening, Mayor, members of council, staff, you two are in. Got a couple of questions. Dan, mostly it's for you. The weed harvester sitting down on Beach Drive, the access down there? I don't know if you got, if you got control of that, or what the deal is. It's been there last year and this year. Our neighborhood only has one way in, one way out. A lot of neighbors use that access. And of course, they all come to me and say, "Do something about it." So, is there any way we could move that to somewhere else? There's got to be dead-end streets somewhere. We could possibly put the elevator in the harvester, let it sit. Like you said, that access gets used quite a bit by my neighborhood, and there's only one way in and out. So if you could look into that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so I'll just, you know, we did have some concerns last year. I think potentially there'll be, I mean, it's really, just strategically where that is on the lake, that is the best place for it. But the hope is maybe it's not there all summer, and it gets moved. But at this point, we can revisit that. But strategically, and just time and effort of going from one end of the lake to the other, that is really kind of a really good place.
Right.
And it is a public, it is city-owned, public land.
Right, yeah. There are, there are 100 of them around the lake. If you look at all the dead-end streets that go there, and nobody else uses as an access. And this, like I said, is an access. And I've had probably 30 people come up to me and ask about that. So, we had there all last winter, or all last summer, rather. It used to sit on the bay, but I guess that property sold out.
Correct.
The other question I got to bring up is about Ben Winick's conditional use permit that he had since like 2013, 14. He promised to put trees up around the barrier of the property as a screening. And he's never done that. He's never even tried to comply with that. He put a few in, they died, he never watered them, they never took care of them. I was an arborist myself for 19 years. I know how trees go, you know? But he's still got the building up there, and he just snubs his nose at the city about it. I have a conditional use permit for my outdoor boiler. I took my stack down for like two weeks to repair my boiler. I got a call from the city right away. So I wish that would get revisited somehow. And his complaint back then was, well, they're going to redo 11th Avenue anyway. It's been 10 years. So that would be ideal if they could get, get taken care of.
Thanks for bringing that up. We'll look into it.
Right on. I appreciate it. That's all I have, gentlemen. Have a good evening. See ya.
Good seeing you, Jim. Take care.
Yep, thanks.
All right, moving to the discussion part of the meeting. These are discussion items only. No decisions will be made. Anything will come back in front of the council at a later date. First item is Abe McKinley Creek Estates Concept Plan Review. Abby.
Thank you, Mayor Roberts, members of the council. Mark Olson, Olson of Joshua Markham Builders, has applied for a new 13-lot, single-family residential subdivision to be located at 2114 Fondin Avenue North, and that's off the southeast corner of Clear Lake. Do have kind of the site location map up for reference. The lots do conform to the minimum requirements for the single-family residential district. It is a 17-acre site, but over half of it are encumbered by wetlands and other natural features. The property gets a little challenging in meeting the minimum density requirements of 1.5 units per acre. As we kind of continue through that process, we are with the hope that greater surveying is going to be able to bring that number in conformance with the comprehensive plan requirements. The property would be required to meet about .09 acres of parkland dedication. However, this isn't an area that is proposed for parkland needs or needed for parkland. Developer is proposing a new kind of a two-headed cul-de-sac design that, again, it would be accessed off of Fondin Avenue all the way back to Highway 97. Developer would be responsible for widening and improving Fondin Road to the new street intersection and building the street under, the street to the city standards. It will conform in the street widths to city standards, however, the street length does exceed the city's maximum of 500 square, or 500 feet. That is one thing that we've talked about will need a variance. The owner is aware of that. But we have talked through some of the ways that it can meet the variance requirements and not be a public detriment. There will not be internal sidewalks in the property. However, we will be seeking a 20-foot-wide trail easement that will connect up on the northeast side of the development, that will connect to the neighborhood park, Clear Lake Park in this area. This is a pretty significant trail connection for the community in that it's really connecting everything on the southeast side of Clear Lake to not only our trail system, the Hardwood Creek Trail, to the high school, middle school area, but also because of that access to Hardwood Creek will connect right into downtown. So it's really bringing a pretty big connectivity component to the, not only the neighborhood, but the community. Some items we know are going to need further analysis, stormwater design, ponding, tree inventory preservation, wetland impacts. All of those things will come in due time. This is concept plan review, so these are non-binding comments, both from the Planning Commission and the City Council. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission on the 11th of this month. The Planning Commission overall was favorable to the development. There were some concerns just for things like snow storage, storm ponding, but they understand, as I mentioned, that those sorts of things will end up coming back before them. Overall, the Planning Commission has been in support, or sees the support for the project. So Mark Olson is here tonight, the applicant. If you guys have any questions for him, otherwise, I'm available if I have questions as well. But again, tonight's, the point of tonight's review is non-binding feedback. And yeah, that's what concept plan review is.
Great, great. Counsel, well, two former Planning Commission members, any thoughts on this?
Sir, do you have a moment to step up to the podium?
The water main. You will be extending the water main. Yes, yeah.
Yes, sir, if you'd like to come up and speak, just state, yes, state your name and address for the record.
I did, yes. The property will extend the water main over to the southeast side of Clear Lake, where water currently isn't available. So there's quite a significant public benefit to the project.
Great.
Some of them wells are bad, or will be bad and won't be able to be replaced because they just won't work.
Sure, sure.
So if you got any questions, it's going to be a real nice community, community, upper end homes.
Sir, if you could state your name and address for the...
Oh, sorry. Mark Olson, Joshua Markham Builders, 7867 Eastwood Road, Moundsville, Minnesota, 55112.
Great.
So, I was at the Planning Commission meeting, sir, and I know there was a little bit of talk. I know you were talking maybe about even making it a private development. I don't know if there's any more talk about that.
Well, I wanted, yeah, I wanted to make it private roads, not for anything. I keep the same number of lots, wouldn't increase them. I would love to make it a private road. I would maintain it, maintain the lights, maintain the plowing, this and that. I did one over in Columbus, St. Clair Lakes, and that's all private. And what's nice about it is it reduces the, and it's right next to Howard Lake, and it reduces that impervious condition and stormwater ponding issues and that. That's the only reason. Otherwise, keep it city and plow it, you know? But I just think it's such a short area that it'd be nice if it was private.
I would guess staff is, would like it to remain public.
Yeah.
Yeah. Our code doesn't really allow for private streets. We internally haven't discussed it since the Planning Commission meeting, but figured that we would through the plating process.
Yeah, I know that came up. I was just curious if that was going anywhere at all or not.
Yeah. No, the only reason I like the public versus the private is the walking trail. Because they'll use that road as access to that trail. So the wider, the better there, the wider, the better there, so.
Into that, on the trail, remind me, the trail on, the new trail on 97, is that going to be on the, at that point, on the north, the south side of?
It'll be on the south side.
Okay. And there's nowhere to really cross until you get to Floral Bay, is it, or?
Ryan can speak to it. I knew, I do believe Mendat does have a couple crossing points.
Yep. So there will be a wider shoulder on the north side through this area, just because you also have those driveways with those three existing homes. It's for garbage service. And then you're going to have a pedestrian crossing at Fondin and Floral Bay to lead to the trail on the south side of Highway 97. Trail will also extend from Floral Bay to the roundabout on the north side as well.
So at Fondin, there is a crossing point there as well? That's, that's good. Other thoughts, Ken?
I blew up the map as large as I could. My only concern would, are those cul-de-sacs large enough, Ryan, for plows and turning around? And what do we, is that an issue, you think? Or it looks to me like they're pretty small.
So, the whole private-public is, conversation's new to me, right? So I don't know if we're compromising some of the street width to have a private road.
But we can't have a private road.
No, we cannot. It was just brought up at the Planning Commission meeting. No discussion has taken place about whether or not this would be a private road.
Okay, so...
If the plan that was submitted didn't meet city standards, that was addressed in the engineering letter and will need to be addressed at the time of preliminary plat.
So the streets will meet the 34 back-to-back, which is our standard urban road section. And then the cul-de-sacs would meet our standard cul-de-sac radiuses as well.
If I could just add a couple of notes, is that one of the main issues here will be the widening of Fondin from 97 up to this development as part of the project. And, you know, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to require them to widen one portion of the road and then allow them to have a narrower road. I mean, build, build the same problem that we're correcting here, right? I think in general, I'll just interject my opinion, private roads are often problematic in that inevitably they come back to the city, residents after 20, 30 years, come back and say, "Hey, we're paying the same taxes as everybody else. Why do we have to plow our street, pay to plow our street?" And then what you're left with is, your, the city's stuck with a substandard road that we really don't want to try to maintain. And you end up telling these people, "Sorry, but that's what you bought into." And it just doesn't play well 30 years down the road. It seems like a nice idea for all the people that move in originally. They kind of know what they're getting into. But eventually, people start to wonder why they're being left out of all these city services. And there's a reason we have these standard widths. It's for public safety. It's for things like garbage service and school buses and all sorts of things that need a little bit more room than a sort of narrow private road would afford. And so I think standard, staff standard recommendation will be to stick with our standards and, you know, have the discussion from there, so.
I, I, Commander, I think it's a great, it looks like a great project. I didn't realize there was buildable land back there. So that's a plus. I think that the widening of Fondin, bringing sewer in, having that trail connection are all just positives. And so, you know, if Planning Commission didn't have, just had a few issues to work through, I think it's a great project. And thank you for your interest in wanting to invest in Forest Lake.
Yeah, no, it's, it's going to be a real nice development.
Yeah, they're very nice, very nice-sized home sites.
Yeah, yeah. It's great soils back there. It's all sand.
Okay.
It's all sand.
What I never guessed.
Yeah, right. So, so that's just discussion. So thank you for attending this evening.
Well, I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here.
Have a great, great evening. 9B, Forest Lake Garage Condos Concept, another concept review plan. Abby.
Thank you. Austin Hallberg of Hallberg Marine has made an application to develop vacant land along Forest Road North. This would include the subdivision, it is, the site location map is up on your screens. This would include the subdivision of land just north of the Forest Lake Airport. It's about a 20, it's about a 30-acre parcel that would be subdivided at first into two parcels. The northerly parcel would be about 23 acres and would eventually house up to 150 garage condo units, as well as 3,000 square feet of business office flex space, and potentially some outdoor storage is proposed. The seven-acre parcel on the south would be a single user. It's a spec industrial commercial with outside storage as well. The property is zoned industrial, and industrial condo multi-tenant structures are permitted in the zoning district. Outdoor storage is not, and other uses will be identified at the time of their development. Property is also located in the airport overlay district, and overall, it generally conforms to the underlying zoning and the overlying district. But because of some of the uses, such as outside storage and the multiple buildings on the site, a planned unit development overlay is required. So as a reminder, I think most of you know a planned unit development overlay's intention is to allow for site flexibility and creativity. It's a way to kind of vary from the city code, but also to help increase the public benefits of the development itself. We have talked with the landowner about parkland dedication. It's not an area, again, that we would want to acquire parkland, but we do have some parkland dedication requirements that are cited in the comp, or in the, in the staff report. It comes to things like street layout, access, and parking. Forest Road is an underdeveloped roadway, but it is designed as a major collector road. And so some improvements would be required as part of this development, similarly to the interstate development just to the north. We are in discussions with both parties about how that all is going to work out and timing of the development of that roadway. Access points, there are some concerns that were brought up for access points. There's one access point proposed for the garage condos that would be in between the two commercial spaces. We, city staff has indicated that we would like to have an emergency access point onto Forest Road as well. One way in, one way out is of a concern to the city. Additionally, we're proposing two access points for the littler parcel, where we would only permit one, just for access spacing requirements on this type of road. The parking is also identified as something that does not conform to city code, but again, potentially eligible for PUD negotiations, in that typically, we don't allow that parking in front of the, of buildings. That being said, there could be an opportunity to move some of this parking in the, behind the buildings for use by the businesses or even the tenant spaces in the garage condos. But the intent of this would be for potential customer parking. So I think as the development plan works out, and we come back through plating processes, we'll kind of work through those designs. Architectural standards is another area where we'll likely need to discuss some flexibility with the landowner, or with the applicant. Right now, 100% metal building is proposed, but that's not to say that we can't try to find ways that metal buildings could be enhanced to make it a little bit more architecturally pleasing. Some of you may know that the city doesn't allow for 100% metal buildings in our industrial district. And so we'll just have to look at how we can be a little more architecturally pleasing in our design with the development going forward. There are some areas, things like trail sidewalks, they're not required, but stormwater ponds, landscaping, wetland impacts, all of those things will continue to flush through as the development kind of keeps progressing. But right now, again, this is a concept plan review. The intent of this is to have a dialogue and for the developer to gain non-binding feedback on what the city thinks about the development as a whole, and how items to maybe consider as keeping, moving forward in that process. This also was reviewed by the Planning Commission, June 11. The Planning Commission asked some questions just about conflicts of use, like the noise from one unit to another unit. They did bring up things like snow storage, impervious surface, and stormwater, and those are things that the developer will be working through as they kind of fine-tune their site. One thing that was brought up by the Planning Commission, and is of a concern of staff, is sometimes that use and the intent versus outcome. These will be non-habitable condo spaces, and the intent of these spaces is for garage use, shop use. But we all know that there might be some recreation use, and where do you sometimes draw the line, or how could these evolve in an undesirable way in the future? Because it is a condo development, it will have an HOA. So in some ways, it'll have some self-regulating member, self-regulating itself. But this isn't an area that does allow for living in. These would not be homes. These are garage condos. And so that was one just area, too, that the Planning Commission just kind of overall expressed some concern. Generally speaking, the use is allowed by the zoning district, and both staff and the Planning Commission thought that it's going to be a really nice addition to Forest Lake. So applicant Aston Hallberg and his representative, Scott Peterson, are here tonight to discuss this with you. If you have questions for them or me, we're available.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
Want to step up to microphone, gentlemen?
Just, yeah, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Austin Hallberg. My address is one-three-one-two-nine Geneva Avenue North, Hugo, Minnesota. I'm a third-generation family member, leading the Hallberg organizations, including our boat dealership, storage operations and commercial real estate. Today, I'm here as applicant for a garage condo development, and we're really excited to introduce it. I firmly believe that this project will be great for the community. It serves the needs of residents who need additional space for vehicles, power sports equipment, boats and RVs. And it also supports small business owners who are looking for affordable spaces to own or lease for their operations. At this time, I'd like to introduce our development leader, Scott, up. Come ask, answer any questions or tell you more about the development.
Great, thanks.
Mayor, Council members, Scott Peterson, eight-eight-six-zero, one-hundred-and-fifty-second Street, North Hugo, Minnesota, representing behalf of the applicant Hallberg Marine. Concept plan in front of you. We're excited about it. Staff's been a great advocate to work through this with us and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, great.
All right. I was at the Planning Commission meeting when you guys first addressed us. It's very, very nice. I think it, it's a very suitable development for the, for the area. You guys, is there another development like this somewhere in the area or that you know, that you've built or existing from somebody else?
Yeah, there's several new concepts. I would tell you Garage condominium has really advanced in the last five to ten years. So if you were to look, there's, in the immediate area, there's Columbus, Minnesota, there's Big Lake, there's Medina, there's Chanhassen, there's Woodbury, there's Stillwater, Holton. All those are other examples of this type of concept being implemented, developed and ultimately sold as well.
Is it the same size as this or smaller or bigger or?
I, I would say they range the full gamut. Some of them are bigger, much bigger development, much smaller units, a higher unit mix perhaps. And other ones are much larger units, probably even between the sixty to seventy unit mix.
And I think I recall from the meeting, they range, I don't know, like up to a hundred thousand or more for a rental of a, a space depending on size?
Yeah, that's correct. So the size can range anywhere from, you know, a thousand square feet to three thousand square feet, right? And some of these are pre-sold, so you get that kind of initial tenant in there, initial owner in there. And that's kind of what works on the demising plan. I would say average price points is anywhere from a hundred thousand to several hundred thousand depending on that overall square footage.
And the sales that you know have gone rather well, they sell real well?
Yes, that's correct.
No, it's great. I think it'll be a great addition to the community and stuff. I wish you well with that.
Great, thank you.
Yep, same, I have the same feeling. A couple of things, I think we covered, staff covered a lot of those. But, you know, the occupancy of it, these are all going to be sold. They're, they're not going to be rented.
The HOA is typically set up where they can be sold or rented. That allows flexibility from a developer standpoint in case the market's not there. But it also allows the attitude of inside of the HOA with rules and regulations, a buyer may have it for, let's say, a decade and then decide they want to rent it. So there is renting options inside of that HOA document as a governing document.
So as part of your HOA document, do you have a limit on how many can be rented?
We haven't gone through the document yet.
So potentially you could rent them all?
Yeah, I would say that that's not our business model a, a, at all. I can tell you, when you start looking at, you know, IRRs, equity multiples, our full intent here is to sell these and move on. And the, the stroke, the single point of rental, I think, allows you so flexibility for the developer, right? And so that's the way we've structured it. That's the way we've outlined this document here. I, I also, if I may, I also think you've got potential, let's call them community businesses in this market that may not be able to go out and afford a building, right? And so I think there's an option for a company that says, listen, I could never buy a three-hundred-thousand-dollar space, but I've developed and I've grown to where I'm no longer doing QuickBooks at the dinner table or I'm no longer parking my equipment out in the yard or my trucks or my trailers or I'm a painter, I'm a landscaper. And so I think by having that for rent capability, it does provide an amenity to the community and to the business community as well.
So your association bylaws, would you have a limit or no limit?
We haven't gotten there. We, we really haven't. I mean, I, we think the market is deep enough that we plan on selling these. That's how the investment is set up. That's how the equity is raised, et cetera.
And if you sold them, then you're saying that that owner could decide if they want to rent them or not?
That's correct.
Okay. Two things that I have a concern about is the metal exteriors. I think, you know, staff talked about it pretty well that, you know, it's not something we normally allow. I certainly personally would love to see a lot more concrete or a lot more solid surface materials versus the metal. And I like to see the parking a little different in front of those buildings, and I'd like to see a lot more landscaping around those buildings. You know, it's, it's not like they need to be that visible for renting or usage, and it would sure give it a nice aesthetic. You know, when you drive by that one in Columbus, as an example off of twenty-three, looks beautiful from the outside. And I would love to see something like that personally around those buildings. And then again, the last thing is the outdoor storage, I think, is a concern, but obviously we can see what you come up with.
Yeah, no, fair enough. And the one picture in the, in the deck is actually from the Columbus Project, the Garage Solutions. As just a reference point for those of you here, I know it's close and I know it's local. I would also say, Council member, you know, one of the things we've, we've attempted to do on the site plan is those first two buildings, that is going to have more of a business feel to it, right? And so when you start looking at storefront glass, you start looking at some of those elements, I think you are naturally going to have a higher percentage of Class A or Class One materials. But we understand, we'll certainly take a look and, and come back with a plan that's, that's more advanced.
Yeah, don't get me wrong. The idea is awesome. I, I'm really for it, just like to see it. We don't want to have, personally, we don't want to have situations like we've had in other businesses around here where they build them, they open them, and they don't look very good after a year or two, so.
Yeah, and I-
Especially for resale for you guys.
Absolutely. I can tell you, this overall development build-out's probably north of a twenty-five-million-dollar commitment. So we need to get this right a hundred percent as well, from our standpoint.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would echo, echo both Council members' comments on both, some of the concerns and, and the positive. I think it's, it, there's a great opportunity here. Just a couple of questions in this, probably might more be directed to staff. What is a, when you talk about a twenty-five million, what is the taxable, where is that compared to like multifamily, commercial, residential? Is that a, is this a good, a good tax base for the city, would you suspect?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a loaded question. There's a lot of ifs and ands or buts there. But yeah, twenty-five million represents a substantial investment in the community. Given the acreage of the site, could something, is there a higher and better use, quote unquote? That would take a lot of analysis, you know? I mean, the more vertical you go, right? You know, I, I know that I recently was involved in a project with a three-story, a hundred-and-ten-unit apartment building that was evaluated, looking at a value of around thirty million, right? And so that kind of gives you a ballpark sense of what this would look like. That, that tax base is a little different though, because if this is a business, businesses are taxed at two times the normal rate where apartments are taxed at one-point-two-five. So there's a lot of, like I say, moving parts there. Certainly the density of structure on this parcel lends itself to good tax base, I would say, in general, right?
So likely it is tax commercial, not, not residential or a little bit different. It, it's just, it's unique, right? I mean, you have people who are buying these for their personal use, so I'm just kind of curious, I don't know.
It will not be taxed at a residential rate because these are not residences and they will not be able to be lived in.
Yeah, that, that's, that's great.
And I will continue to state that in every public meeting going forward.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I may just elaborate on that a little bit more. I mean, the site's significantly impacted by wetlands, right? And so when you start looking at multiple buildings with smaller footprints, that does allow you to yield a much bigger end user, right? From a square footage standpoint than just a straight, single building, how would that look? And then secondly, in regards to going vertical, we've got a forty-five-foot height limit here because we're inside the, the airport overlay. So we, we think that represents about as dense and about as max utilization as you can for that site. And then just to put it in kind of context, you know, that's thirty acres that currently is classified as agricultural. Tax basis is, you know, a couple thousand dollars, where we're looking at, you know, a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty individual subdivided PIDs with price points, you know, in the hundred-thousand-dollar range.
So you mentioned businesses, and maybe I missed this in the packet. Are, are people going to just, are they going to be able to run commercial businesses out of those front two buildings where there's parking? Or will they be able to have a business throughout this, this whole space here? And if so, what would be allowed for parking and how do you accommodate the parking for that?
Sure, those are great questions, and some of that has not yet been vetted with the applicant. Definitely those two building areas are intended for commercial users, that storefront design. We haven't really gone through the individual unit uses. I don't think that there'd be anything in our zoning code that would preclude them. But I think that we'd want to talk through what their business plan is to see how we can help ensure that this is something that fits with the community. I will say, this is going to be a secured, a secured site that I would imagine the owner and the developer doesn't want a lot of that residential, or I don't want to use the word residential.
Transient.
Traffic just coming in and out, so.
Some of the questions that I know other communities wrestle with with this where, you know, to your point about a, the mom and pop that's outgrowing their garage and they got a landscape business, now they got three employees instead of one, you know, and you've got parking issues, right? If people are, are people reporting here to work, those are issues. There are building code issues. All of a sudden, the, the classification of the space is, is it a storage, an S-one? Or is it all of a sudden elevated to a different thing because people are spending an extended period of time, they're working there? Is there office spaces or bathroom? All those questions that, again, probably haven't been fully vetted, and that's why we're just at concept level right now.
You know, other than some of those concerns, I, I think it's great. There definitely is a, a need in this area for something like this. And we appreciate your interest in wanting to invest in Forest Lake, so.
For sure.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions from Councilors?
I have one more question to staff. Is, is, or I suppose I could ask you, are you thinking water and sewer in all these buildings? Or are you going to do like a, 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 one restroom per building or something? Are you, you actually going to want water and sewer to each and every unit?
That's correct, yes.
What's the sack and whack on something like that?
We're still working through those.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
It's, it's, when you look at it, I mean, sack and whack is driven by an intensity of use, right? So this is obviously a different calculation than, you know, public restroom, gas station, et cetera. So we'll cross that bridge with staff here in the coming weeks.
The only other thing is on this HOA, just try to button up as much stuff as possible because we'll end up hearing about the issues regardless. And so as much as you can do that would be appreciated as well as you move forward.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council members.
Great, thank you. Ten, staff updates, Administrator's Report. Oh, sorry, I missed one, sorry. Nine C, Comfort Lake, Forest Lake Watershed District Board Manager's vacancy. I don't know how I could have forgot that one, so.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we just want to make it kind of publicly aware that there is an opening on the, not only is the position or the board, for board member up, but the incumbent is not electing to rerun. And so there's a very open opportunity here for folks to join the Watershed District Board. We're hopeful that someone from our community can, can do that. And this is one of three seats out of five that are assigned to Washington County. And essentially eligible people are anyone that lives in the county, in the Watershed District. If you have questions about where that boundary is, certainly staff can help you figure that out. Or take a look at their website, you can probably figure out whether or not you're in their boundary. And then as long as you're not a government official of the state, so state-elected or appointed official, you're eligible. So wide range of people, and you don't need to be a water expert. You don't need to be an environmental expert. We're just looking for people that make sound decisions based on the evidence in front of them. And so we'd be glad to take your application. The reason we would like to hear from you is that there's a, a potential that the city needs to endorse your candidacy. You can certainly fill out the application on the website, the county's website that is posted. But the city would also like to know about your application in the event that we have to endorse that. And so we're working through that with the county right now to determine whether or not we, we do need to endorse that. We may just decide to endorse it even if they don't need it. But we're working through some of those issues with the county currently, so. Yeah, just wanted to make a public announcement to make sure everyone was aware that that opportunity existed. And certainly just call City Hall and we'll help you through the process.
I appreciate that update on this. It's an important, these are important positions. There's a lot of control. There's big budgets there. And so having some people that are, you know, have common sense and want to protect the water and still be pro-development, that's really the best fit for that, and we value what the watersheds do. And so if we can get some of our citizens involved, that'd be great. Any, any thoughts, anyone else?
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
All right, now we'll go to staff updates and start with the Administrator's Report.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we stand for any, staff, we stand for any questions on the report in the packet. Otherwise, just a few things I wanted to highlight were that we are very close to making an offer for a finance director candidate. And Jolene and I have been busy checking references and getting some of those things taken care of. But we feel like we're going to have a, a successful candidate here very soon. Want to remind everybody the new meeting start times, beginning with our next meeting and the first one in July. We will be at, meeting at six PM here. And that goes for all of the city council meetings, the two council meetings and the workshop session. And then a reminder that our website has a number of open positions. We have an HR generalist, a building official, a police officer and an assistant community development director position all open at this point in time. So please, if, spread the word, use your social media, especially some of the things like LinkedIn and others that are business-related. But also even Facebook and Twitter work well as, as well. So please help us spread the word, and if you know folks that are in those, in those positions that would be viable candidates, please let us know. With that, I think, yeah, I would take any other questions anyone has.
Any questions?
Thank you.
We'll stay up here and start with Ryan, the updates.
Mayor, City Council, just a few things to outline. Just want to point out with the close coordination, Public Works Director Dave Adams and City Administrator Mark Stotts. And MINDOT we've had with traffic control changes and related to the Highway ninety-seven project. So they've been very responsive and fast-acting and Dave and Mark have been very involved with a lot of those changes too. So just want to point that out. North Shore Trail updates. If you go to City's website, there is an update, little link there. And then if you go into it, there's a QR code to sign up for some of the updates yourself. Or you can go into the webpage and subscribe with your email, and you can get ongoing updates. So that's being updated at a minimum weekly. Sometimes it's been three times a week, just depending on what's going on. So definitely it's pretty very current information if you guys want to really know what's going on, when it's going on. So encourage you to sign up for those updates with that. If weather allows this week, we'll pave the base course on Headwaters Parkway. So that'll be a saving grace for a lot of residents that are living down in that area. Eureka Public Open House, to talk about the final design and the project that'll be going to state aid, will be Monday, July fourteenth, up in the community room, four-thirty PM to six PM. So put that on your calendars for, before the city council meeting on July fourteenth. That's all I got.
Just a question on, on North Shore with the gas line, and maybe it's for Dave. The gas line replacement that's still going on, is that impeding the project at all or slowing that down that you're aware of?
I haven't heard of any delays. We spent a lot of time with them before the project was bid to work on staging and stuff like that. So we're, we're in different areas right now primarily, so.
Yeah, the only issue that we run into is might be Hayward, that chunk of Hayward that they're going to save for last. So if we get bad weather and they can't catch that in time, that might not be able to get done. But North Shore Trail, they're, they're leapfrogging ahead of construction, so that shouldn't be an issue there. It'll be that chunk of Hayward going off of North Shore down the hill that it's still, not a hundred percent sure we're going to get that in yet.
Okay. Any other questions for Ryan at all?
Task area is all finished too.
Okay.
I did verify too that the signage is up today for the Everton businesses. We met with MINDOT, as Ryan mentioned, they've been very responsive and did put up some additional signage to help those businesses out, so.
Thank you for that. I, I happened to go out there and visit those and, you know, QuickTrip is down eighty percent and they're all struggling out there. But appreciate, they appreciated the additional signage, so thank you for everyone for working on, on that. Jolene, anything tonight?
No additional updates tonight.
If it hasn't already been, is there an opportunity on those updates that Ryan was mentioning to do that, a, a social media post on that?
Yeah, I can put some more social media out on that. I, I did at the start of the project, but I can certainly update that and keep, keep that kind of regular as the project goes through the summer.
Was, and there, and that, there was an opportunity for people to sign up for those updates, okay?
Correct, yep. Correct.
Great, thanks. Abby?
Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight in the administrators' report. We did, as Mark had mentioned, we have some vacancies, the assistant community development director position and building official position. Today was the first round reviews of assistant development director position. We do have some very strong candidates. Building official position is open until July 1st, if you know anyone that's interested. We do have planning commission this Wednesday. There's a few different items on there, but one thing that might be of interest to the community is our first retail cannabis application, just giving a heads up. That will come before the city council, because we do grant them by interim use permit, which can only be granted by the council. And then lastly, working with the county CDA and the final tuning of their repair and renovate loan program, so as a reminder to the council, the city is receiving local affordable housing aid from the state. It's a metropolitan area tax to help support affordable housing efforts. And as part of that, we can use the funds to help support households that make 115% of the area median income. Generally, housing programs don't go that high and certainly never above that 100%, and so the county has created this new loan program that would be eligible to Forest Lake residents for, that make more than the area median income. We still have to work through the particulars of the, our use of the Laha funds and enter into an agreement with the county on those, but we are getting really close to kind of getting something finalized and back before you to start offering that program to our residents. So I'd imagine by the latest fall, we could start utilizing the county to utilize those funds or distribute those funds within the community.
Thank, thank you for that update. Dave?
Sometimes I get confused about engaging with open forum or not, but I can, if, if it's something the council would like to bring back and talk about, otherwise I can reach out to Jim and explain, I mean, it was a quite thorough look through all the accesses, I mean, not only the weed harvest, but you have to get a truck back there too to haul the weeds, so, and to your point through the, just the location of those, where the harvest is and cutting, so if you'd like to bring that up so the council can go through that again, that's, we're more than capable of doing that, or as I can, reach out to Jim and kind of explain how we got to where we got last year.
I, I, I don't know, probably in, it, I don't know, it could, new, being new, you're probably not aware of the sit, you know, the situation last year, because there was some, you know, a fair amount of feedback on that last year. I, I understand why it has to be there, if there's an ability that a trailer's not there for the whole summer, and it's just more limited if we're cutting on one end of the lake and then we move to the other and then pull that trailer out, to, to be neighborly, because, you know, it is, it's city-owned land, and we have that access, those access points for a reason to do things like this, and so it's, it's not ideal, and I understand when you're, you've had that ability to have free rein on that and be able to use it, which is great, that's what they're there for, for the public to use as well, and something changes, that's, that's not always easy to, to see, and so if there is a way to limit the amount of time that it's there, or if the, if the conveyor can be moved, you know, over more so that they can still get in there, I, I, I don't know, those are the only other things I'd be interested in.
One of our issues is one of the property owners has tilted their dock all the way to the cell, so now we've had a, now we can only have a little angle in there too, so. And we, and we have to keep them in there, just to kind of play the wind, so sometimes we have to cut on this side of the lake, because it's, the winds come out of a different direction, so I would like to say, yeah, we could cut here until middle of July and then pull it out, but it doesn't kind of work that way, it's, you know, you, some days, just like yesterday or last week, Friday, they had to go all the way to the other side of the lake, because the wind kept pushing them, pushing them offshore, so. I mean, we can, we can always look, but we, we looked in a bunch of places, you need the water depth to be able to get the harvester in there, and you need a place where the truck can back up to the conveyor, and, I mean, like to his point, Woodland Drive was a good spot for a lot of years, but that property sold and that property owner did not want us to store stuff there, and we don't have a big enough right of way to get all of our equipment back there. Unfortunately, that's, it's just a change. I'm sure they love it, that that's not there anymore, but then somebody else probably gets, you know, gets it now too, so.
Right.
But I'll, I'll reach out to Jim and, and see if he has any additional questions and talk to him about it.
Okay.
I think that's all I have today.
Chief Newman?
Two updates. The application period for the position of paid-on-call firefighter will close on July 15th. We'll start that process immediately after that with an orientation, physical agility test, and then interviews. Start date will be 10/1. And then for the building department for the fire tech position, that application period closed on June 3rd. We received 15 applications. We did, started interviews today, interviewed four today, we'll have two tomorrow. So far, we've had some good candidates. We expect to go through that process and hopefully have them start end of July, beginning of August.
Great, thank, thank you. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, a few updates for you. Last week, we hosted the 30th Annual Safety Camp. Want to thank Public Works and the Fire Department for all their work again this year. It was a fantastic event, and I also want to thank council member Larson and council member Miller for stopping by. Secondly, as you know, we have the officer, police officer opening, and that's because Officer Cole Gaspers, his last day is tomorrow, and I want to thank him for his three years of service with the city of Forest Lake. And then lastly, the planning and organizing for the July 4th festivities continues, pretty much know what we're doing since we've been doing it for so many years now, but a lot of time and effort goes in with many, many city staff members, so I also want to thank everyone for their assistance with that, and we're looking forward to a successful and another great event this year.
And hopefully no cancellation of fireworks.
Too soon.
And that's all I have for you today.
Yeah, yeah, thank, thank you, Matt. We'll go to council member Larson.
Just a couple of updates real quick on the Planning Commission. As you heard tonight, we had two concept plans brought before the Planning Commission, and they elaborated quite extensively on both projects, and I think they shared a lot of good, positive reviews with that. Next item would be, we're going to be interviewing a Planning Commission member on Wednesday morning and all, or Thursday morning and Friday morning to fill out spots. We'll be up to full strength then on the Planning Commission.
So we have two applicants?
Two applicants.
Great.
Yeah.
That's great news, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Council member Miller?
The only update I have is I have a busy week. We have a Comfort Lake, Forest Lake Watershed meeting this week and a school board meeting this week, so I'll be attending both, and I'll give you some updates next time.
Okay, thank you. I don't really have any updates, since you mentioned the school board, upcoming school board meeting, I, I do have a few comments to make. I think by, as a rule, most elected officials should stay in their own lane and not focus on other elected officials' issues, but the school board is going through some changes of dress code and some other changes. Particularly the dress code, currently it is in place where swastikas, Confederate flag, and KKK signs or shirts or flags are not allowed at the school. This school board chair has decided to revisit that, for whatever reason. And I met with him personally here at City Hall on Thursday, and as it's, as the first reading went, it's still in there, but after meeting with the chair, it sounds as though he's interested in removing that, so that there will be an opportunity potentially for people to come to the school in Forest Lake here, wearing those symbols, symbols of hatred, genocide, and lynching. This is not Forest Lake. We welcome everyone here, and this is a bad look. We've got great staff, we have council members here that are willing to work as hard as they can to bring people to Forest Lake, businesses, residents, and all you have to do is Google Forest Lake, and this is the crap that comes up right now.